Keith, do you see it on the computer there by any chance?
Mayor Marshall is ill this evening and we wish her a speedy recovery. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Tuckerden Borough Council for February 18th, 2025. Madam Court, please read the Open Public Meeting Act statement, please.
Yes, provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with. This was published in the Deacon and the Edinburgh Park Press date the time being placed.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Rayland?
President.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Calangelo?
Here.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pleasure of the slide.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no presentations this evening. We'll get right into the business portion of our meeting, starting with legislation and councilman Bruton.
Thank you, Council President. I'm just saying. Tonight I had a second reading and a public hearing for ordinance number one of 2025 and is updating the fees for building department, construction permits, and other fees within that department. So at this time, I have an ordinance in the borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey amending the supplement of chapter 132 of the Borough Code entitled Construction Code Uniform, like the openness for public comment.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
You can do all in favor.
Okay, all in favor.
For open and meetings.
Thank you. All in favor. Pass.
Anyone having comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, make a motion to the public court.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Poll the comment on this ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carry.
At this time, make a motion to adopt ordinance number one of 2025.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number one of 2025. Any comments from council? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to finance. Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Council President. I do have one ordinance reading. It'll be the first reading this evening as well as three resolutions. I wanted to make one quick announcement before we get into that. I had spoken with the superintendent and principal at Tuckerden Elementary School and the superintendent is hosting a series of meetings to go over their 2025, 2026 school budget planning, academic achievement, chronicles, centeeism, mental health awareness, and community connectedness. So this is kind of like a, I mean, I won't say it's informal, it is a formal meeting that Tuckerden is putting on, but she's encouraging the residents of Tuckerden to come out, to get involved, to hear what's going on in the schools. So I will get this up on the website, but the next meeting that they're hosting will be on Tuesday, February 25th, and that is at Tuckerden Elementary School. I believe it's at 6:30, but again, I'll get it all electronically from her so that I can get it up and I'll have everything up going along with that. For my first order of official business, I will have the first reading of ordinance number two of 2025. This is an ordinance, a bond ordinance appropriating $1,275,000 in bonds or notes to do sewer replacement on Danny Tucker Drive in town. Next reading will be?
March 17th.
March 17th, and we'll have the public hearing at that point. So I have an ordinance of the borough of Tuckerden and the county of Ocean State of New Jersey providing for sanitary sewer main replacement on Daddy Tucker Drive and appropriating $1,275,000 therefore, and providing for the issuance of $1,275,000 in bonds or notes of the borough to finance the same. And I move this on first reading. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Move this ordinance on first reading. Any questions from council? Seeing none, roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I have a resolution for the payment of claims. Since we're doing our council meetings once a month now, we're kind of getting the double bill that's put into one, so our totals will be a little bit higher. For this month, we have $2,179,459.46 going out. Out of that, I wanted to point out that $762,813 of that is going to Pine Lands Regional School District, $665,410.84 is going to Tuckerden Elementary School, and $571,691.01 is going to our Ocean County levy. So out of our close to 2.2 million, almost 1.9 of that is not directly for the borough. With that, I have a resolution of the borough of Tuckerden, county of Ocean, state of New Jersey, authorizing payment of claims in the amount of $2,179,459.46. And I move this resolution. Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to pay the bills. Any questions from council? Seeing none, roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
I'm staying.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
My next resolution is for the certification of the 2023 audit. We have received our 2023 audit back and it's acceptable. Resolution of the borough of Tuckerden, county of Ocean, state of New Jersey, authorizing the annual certification of the 2023 municipal audit. And I move this resolution. Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the 23 audit. Any questions from council? Seeing none, roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And then my final resolution this evening is along the same lines of the 2023 audit. It's our corrective action plan. I have a resolution of the borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey approving the corrective plans submitted by the chief financial officer for the year ending December 31st, 2023, and I move this. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. The resolution is written. Any questions from council? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that is all I have this evening. The committee report, I'll have one in a minute.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the public works, water, and sewer. Councilman Calangelo. Tonight I'll have three resolutions, two of which have to do with road openings. One on King Fisher, the other on Second Avenue. Both are to reconnect gas. And the third resolution is to award a contract for the purchase of the utility body for one of our trucks. Couple announcements for the future. Ocean County's Department of Solid Waste Management is again sponsoring their hazardous waste program for 2025 as well as their document shredding program. Details will be posted on the website. The document shredding has two times of the year. One is a spring and a fall schedule. The May 24th schedule for hazardous waste is the one nearest to us and that'll be in May and that's at Stafford, but all the details will be on the website. I have a resolution of the borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the approval of a road opening permit on King Fisher Road for block 112, block 41 and granting relief under section 419-15 of the Borough Code, and I move this resolution. Second. Okay, motion been made and seconded to authorize this road opening. Any questions from council? Seeing none, roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, I have a resolution of the borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the approval of a road opening permit on Second Avenue for granting relief under section 229-15 of the Borough Code, and I move this resolution. Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to have the road opening on Second Avenue. Questions from council? Seeing none, roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, I have a resolution of the borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a contract for the purchase of a nine-foot stall utility body. And we had two quotes received. Mama's truck had the lowest bid of $8,400 and I move this resolution. Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the purchase of a utility body for a truck. Any questions from council? Seeing none, roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
All right, we'll now move on to public buildings and grounds and community affairs, councilman Diemar.
Thank you, President Claydell. I have one resolution this evening. This is a resolution for the sale of the Griss Mill, also known as 100 Water Street. After careful consideration, council has agreed that the Griss Mill, it's time to sell it. There's been, you know, in considering this, we looked at the condition of it, what we could do with it. It's taken a long time to really get to the point where we realized that it was time to sell it and get it on the tax rolls. And this appraisal has been done for, and it came out to $190,000 and that'll be the basic bid. That's an acceptable low bid on it. We haven't come up with the date of the sale yet, but it'll be sold at auction. Therefore, I move this resolution, Resolution of the borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing sales block 33, block 25 of the Griss Mill. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Resolution, resolution. Any questions from council?
I'm gonna announce it now.
Okay.
Just real quick, I want to go over it in public real quick because we have to do three consecutive meetings, or three consecutive weeks of advertisement. And the last advertisement has to be seven days prior to the acceptance of the bids. Do we want to take bids at the next council meeting or do we want to take bids at the week before the next council meeting? Because I want to put a date in this resolution tonight that we're... So the next council meeting is St. Patrick's Day, March 17th. We can take bids, say, March, like, 11th to Tuesday.
I would take them a week ahead of time myself, but...
Okay, you don't want to do it by a week, Monday, because there's some rules on that as well. So are you available Tuesday to do March 11th?
Would be the 11th.
Yeah. Or the 12th?
The 12th would be better.
Okay, so morning, 10:00 AM?
10:00.
All right, so March 12th, 10:00 AM, will be the sale that's going to take place here. So that resolution will now have March 12th at 10:00 AM.
And that's enough time? That's, that works out?
Uh, let me just, let me check it out for you.
You would have three?
It would go in on Friday.
Three consecutive weeks prior to that sale.
Two, three. Yes, it would go in March 21st, or February 21st, February 28th, March 7th. And then the sale would be the 12th, so that's five days from the last publication, which is within the seven days. Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Cut. Not earlier than?
Not earlier than seven days.
Instead of these days prior, so is that?
It's not earlier. Right.
Yep, we're good.
Make that resolution.
Yeah, that's why we do it three weeks in a row, because the statutory language is not really clear when it says not earlier that does it mean, you know, within seven days or beyond seven days. So I always say do it three weeks in a row when you're saying it.
Okay, did we have a second for that?
Rock. That's why I have a second.
Okay, with the discussion on the resolution as read, roll call vote, please.
The bid will be, sorry, and the bid will be similar to the fire truck, not sealed bids, right? It would be more like an auction type bid.
Correct.
So people can come in, the minimum bid's $190, and it would go back and forth. Just a while. Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
I'm staying.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Counselor, you can do one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have nothing else, but okay. Thank you. We'll move on then to administration and regulations. Councilman Dupree.
Thank you, President Calangelo. I only have one line item. I will have a fire EMS report in the community report section. Has every council member had a chance to look over the minutes? Any additions or corrections that you feel needed? There being none, I move that we accept the minutes as written. That's all.
Okay, a motion made and seconded to accept the minutes. Any questions from council? Seeing none, then roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to lawn public safety. Councilman Peterson.
Thank you. I have the monthly activity report for the police department for January 2025. Calls for service were 237, arrests were eight, motor vehicle stops were 122, motor vehicle summons were 77, motor vehicle accidents were eight, medical was 22, and suspicious person in a vehicle checked for 21. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Moving on, there will be some appointments this evening, an appointment and a resolution which I'll read. Resolution of the borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey supporting publishing legal notices on official government websites and urging the state leaders to pass legislation that will authorize municipalities, counties, schools, districts, and all local government to publish legal notices in a clear, transparent, and timely manner on a government's official website, and I move this resolution. Second. Okay, motion made and seconded on the resolution as read. Is there no questions from council? Roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And?
Council President, I'm sorry, the appointment to the EDC tonight will have to be scratched, the Economic Development Committee, because there's some discrepancies and I wanted to talk to the mayor, but I haven't been able to because of COVID, so it'll just be the appointment to the Department of Health.
All right, thank you, then I'll go forward with the one that I do have. I have a resolution of the borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey appointing a member to the Tuckerden Borough Environmental Commission. Paul Salomani has been appointed as alternate number two for a term to expire December 31st, 2026. I move this resolution. Second. Okay, motion made and seconded on this appointment. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And thank you, Paul, for the willingness to volunteer.
No problem.
Mr. Conners?
I have nothing to say, nor do I have anything to add to your attention.
Thank you, sir. Madam Court?
I have a few things this evening. The first thing I have is application for a raffle license, requesting waiver of 50 from the Finance for the July Celebration Committee for a raffle to be held on February 24th.
Do you have that request? Second.
Okay, I believe a motion was made and seconded.
Yeah, yeah, pretty quick, sorry about that.
With that in mind, then, roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Of same.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one I have is also a raffle application from the Tuckerden Library Association for two separate dates. They two are requesting waiver of 50. I'm sorry, not two different dates, just, um, not two different dates, but I believe it's one to 50/50 more than all pre- pre- or just one? For May 3rd, 2025, and they two are asking for a request of waiver of 50.
I made that one. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to waive the raffle license fee. Roll all vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. The next thing I have is a request for facility use form from the Jersey Shore Boat Racing Club. They are requesting the South Green Street Park for August... Double checking myself to do it. August 24th, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and they will include all the necessary documentation, insurance, cleaning up afterwards. They agree to everything that's in the facility use form, so they're requesting that date.
I made that one. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we allow this to proceed pending all the requirements presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
It doesn't conflict with any of the TBA concert, right? I know they had one at the end of August.
Did they give us an application already?
I thought so, and then we approved it.
This year?
What's that? Maybe not.
Well, it would have been last meeting, one of the two meetings.
Because, yeah, I guess you're right, so, then, yeah.
What time did they hold the concerts at?
I think they're usually at like 5:30 or 6:00.
Usually their concerts are Saturday nights, correct?
Yeah, they would, it would be a Saturday.
Boat races is Sunday.
Sunday, yeah, so their concert is, they all are on Saturday.
Okay, and I believe, I almost guarantee that all their boat races are on Sunday. Correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows, but usually boat racing is only on Sunday.
Only on Sunday.
Yeah.
Then yes.
So I don't think there'll be any conflict. The only thing I have is...
It might have been at the TBA meeting that they talked about.
I have two applications from them. One has the date of August 24th and then the other one has date of just one. I'm not sure if they're asking for two dates. Is any, is anybody here from the boat club? I'm not, I'm not sure if they're asking for another date, so just in case you might have one coming back with a more specific date, but as of right now, it's August 24th.
June 1st.
Is that what they're asking for? Okay. Like I said, the application says just one on it.
That's the schedule for the year.
Paul, you are.
Hold on there. That's when you got the appointment tonight.
All right, so I'm requesting, sorry guys, I'm requesting June 1st and August 24th. Same, same thing. And I have a motion, did I have it?
The motion is to accept both the dates. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the dates as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rayland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Calangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Diemar?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Well, now we'll do the committee reports. Councilman Martin?
Thank you. Tagging along with the raffle, the first raffle license that Jenny did for the Pine Lands Worthless Fire Works Committee, that is next Monday, February 24th. It's a 50/50 raffle that will be coinciding with their spaghetti dinner, which will be at the Redman. So from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Redman is spaghetti dinner next Monday.
Meatballs?
Meatballs. Salad for you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports from anyone in the audience? Seeing none then, we're going to move to the open public forum. Just want to remind everyone before I call for the, for the vote that all comments or questions from the public are limited to five minutes per speaker. Sharing of unused amendments is not allowed, and please be respectful when making your comments. And please state your full name and address when you approach the podium. I move to open the public forum. Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to open the public forum. All in favor?
Aye.
Pat? Okay, anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Yes, sir.
My name's Lee Everett from 121 Willa and Terrace, Tucker. First thing I want to mention, well, you said you were going to resign. You still want to keep your word?
No, I said that if you could show where I said I'm going to go after your tax exempt status, I would. The clip that you played from that is me saying, asking for a resignation and that it would be my recommendation.
So it's a technicality.
So...
Okay, that's fine. I wanted to mention, Mr. Dupree, the previous meeting you said that all your weed turned in, every fire company in the area, that's not true. But what's going on there is we were holding a cannibal. The fire companies who have members said either went after our fire company or one of us is individuals in any way, shape, or form in the past and holding the fire companies that come into town to the same standards that we were built to. They have no intention to go after any other fire company. And now I believe West Tucker Fire Company has washed out the scum from their fire company, so that's all said and done now, but everything moves on. Next thing I wanted to mention is the fire company's service. As I mentioned before, I thought West Tucker should, closer to most of town, they should have been appointed here. Had another fire call that was called in as a structure fire, and West Tucker got there first. So aside from politics, it would make sense that they'd be the primary coverage for Tuckerdans that are closer to most of it, and I just don't know why that decision was made. Is there any reason for it? No? Okay, I don't want to go on to the EMS issue. Are you giving, is Great Bay getting $25,000 this year?
This year? We haven't finalized the budget at all this year.
Okay, well, I saw they were getting an amount on the budget here that would amount to 25,000 a year. No?
On the budget?
Nobody's saying anything? Okay, yeah, it's in here, the payment this year.
Of the bills list?
Yeah, the bill list. So if that were, that monthly fee, that monthly amount was given for 12 months, it would work out to about 25,000 a year. So is that the plan, give the Great Bay 25,000 this year?
So we carry on with the budget until we adopt the new budget? Almost in the past, so that is what we did last year, which...
No, it wasn't, it was 10,000 this year. You're the chairman of the finance, you have no clue what's going on with the money? Okay, well, look, here's one of the problems I have. Last month, we're paying Great Bay EMS for service here. Last month, there was an incident at daytime on Saturday, the chief of Galloway told me about it. The captain at Great Bay, or the chief of Great Bay, called Galloway, said, can you get ambulance up here? We don't have anybody to cover the area. So Galloway came up, and they came up, the Great Bay ambulance was leaving to go cover Stafford. So that means if somebody here has a call, then they're gonna have to have a paid ambulance come instead of volunteer service that we're paying for. So I just wanna make a point there, I don't think that's fair. And then the next day, I listened to this scanner, they're trying to get ambulances ra, out around here, that was on Sunday, there was a chief's meeting at West Tucker in, and from what I'm told by a couple of people at the meeting, there were five people that are cross-members between Great Bay EMS and Parkerton Fire Company sat there at the meeting, wouldn't leave, go answer the call, two of them are sitting right in here tonight. So why are we paying for service like that? That's my question. No answers? Okay. Anybody gonna look into it, or just wanna go ahead?
I can tell you flat out...
What's that?
I can tell you flat out...
The three of you were at the meeting, that's right.
Both the chief and myself left that meeting, so whoever told you that, they lied to you or you're lying to us.
I'm not lying.
I'm sure it's the latter.
Okay, well, we'll clarify that the next minute, okay?
Maybe we will.
But I think it's wrong for you to make a statement like corrupt when you make a statement that I'm turning in all the local fire companies and the fire companies, that is not true, absolutely not true, in any way, shape, or form.
How about if...
Look at the paperwork, it's not true.
How about if I supplied the letter from the state and sent you turn them in? That's what I have to go.
I didn't turn anybody in.
Yes, you certainly did.
I'm the one that did, except for the two companies, the two companies that have members either turn individuals or a fire company into their agencies, okay? That's...
I was told you turned in West Tucker, you turned in Parkerton, you turned in Mystic Islands, the only one, and you also turned in West, or, uh, West Creek.
No, no way, shape, or form, didn't happen. They were not involved in it, they didn't do anything wrong, as I saw, and that, that's total falsehood.
What you saw, so you're going around checking everybody out?
The state has, well, I, I just wanna continue with, you and your, when Parkerton comes into Tucker for calls, or Great Bay, they're fair game, we're taxpayers here.
Fair, fair game.
They're fair game, and you're held to the same standards we were held to, held to law, okay?
They are trained by Ocean County Fire Academy, so they are held to the same standards, everybody else did. The only thing was, that we see, was Tuckerton that was held with the same standards, couldn't measure up, and that's why you're not chief. You told...
No, I wasn't chief when this happened, I was chief previously, yeah.
Yeah, but your son was, and you were chief prior to that, and when you invited me and the mayor, you said that you were pretty much the chief, and you showed me...
Well, I was after we were taking our service. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can we summarize? Do you have anything else to say?
Yeah. Okay, now...
Okay, that's too long, please sit down, your time is up.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be respectful in their comments tonight?
Uh, I don't got a...
Please mark the podium, state your full name and address.
Sure. Give me a phone, my name is Jim Nefelding, current owner of Worsed Cigars, live in Nine Hare Drive, Manhawken, New Jersey. I'm interested in the address now. And I'm just curious, the bidding process, I'm sure all learned that, fit more about the next few weeks. Yeah, this will be, I believe, given the age of the building, I'm interested in keeping the historic, and keep remembering looking at that picture up there, we're talented, so I don't look into it, not in a way that's gonna change it at all. I had a look through the council, anyone else in town that has to say to the historical side, is there what we can and can't do with the building? I don't wanna change it all, wanna update it and bring it to these code standards, but given the fact that it's a originally three-year-old building, you know, without being in there, without having a structural engineer or architect, you have to walk the property, you know, paying the one ninety is fine, or whatever the number might be, but maybe it's four hundred thousand dollar problem, because the thing sits over water. And it's been sitting over water quite a long time, so just in that respect, we thought we could, in this publication, uh, they say, you know, the property can be viewed at certain times during the course of the weekend, some of the members can be in a certain town, can be in a certain, if I can, and walk us through it. Yeah, I would video it, I'd have a contract or structure near an architect, I mean, make sure that, you know, I'm not buying something that's, you know, two hundred thousand dollar, about to fall over the water. Because just, like, only concern is the age. Happy to keep it as beautiful as it is, bring back its original condition, leave the colors the same, and put window boxes in, some flowers in, make it look pretty for everyone to drive by, and regardless of the fact, it's a cigar shop inside, irrelevant. We're, we're gonna make it available for you to go through it.
So, uh, the, the, there was a appraisal done on it, how we arrived from to the minimum bid, there was an appraisal on it, which any bidder is, uh, I believe, ha, happy to come and, and look at that. And then I would just ask that you email me, uh, a time and a date that you would like to come and view it, and we'll set that up, and my public works superintendent will, uh, assist you and take you throughout the whole building, and you can do whatever, whatever.
Yeah, right, I only got, it gave me half hour access to be served.
It's fine, you just email me, uh, or give me a call, and we'll set it up, and, and that's for anybody who's interested in the property.
Always, thanks. I appreciate your time, man, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council?
Good evening. Frank, I'm the chief of the Parker Town Volunteer Fire Company, seven oh one, railroad drop toll in Parker Town, yeah. As we said, West Tucker did piece of the fire that day, because one of your employees that were working at the Borough, he did get there to chief truck first. That's no lie, he works right down the road, so he should, it was that night he was working. As far as the ambulants, every time there's a call, and people have known me, will know, I don't shut my pager off, I run twenty-four seven, I take every call I can with except when I come working. We have two ambulants in Parker Town Fire Company, they have four ambulances, and yes, we struggle at times, but we always get that one ambulance out, sometimes we get two ambulances out, the problem is we're having multiple calls at a time. It's impossible at that time for us to do this. But as far as fire wise, the fire company had, um, had put a cycling program together to pay for a call. Eleven borough residents have came to us, have joined, and eleven of them are firefighters. And they're having fun, Parker Town Fire Company, they said they've never had this hard time. We take care of Borough fully in compliance with the state, we inspected all your meet raiders, we did all our pre-plans, this hasn't had to be done since time, and it hasn't been chief. That's how long this has gone. We got your town in compliance, and we're enjoying being here, so please work great with us, and like, I'm not gonna help your abandoned town people, but when you hear stuff like this, you wanna know the answer, give me a call. One of my members, you're gonna get every meeting, three bucks, something like this. Thank you.
Just wanted you to see my shirt. I'm about to get, I wear this for you. Uh, I live at two oh nine Cedar Street, a little confused now, going back and forth with moms. Anyway, everything aside, um, I have nothing but awe for the gentlemen and women who have assisted me in the past two years, who've gone to my parents' side. You in particular, Fourth of July, he was at the parade, I saw him, and I just, like, pushed the girl, burned away, and gave him a big hug. A donation will come soon, huh? The numbers mess me up. But anyway, so I don't, I don't wanna, I don't think I'm just lucky that I've had service like that. Kind, put up with my obnoxious remarks, because the more nervous or whatever, you know, upset, I go to the jury. And so when I come in here, and I, and I hear this, uh, apparently, unfortunately, the Tuckerton Fire Department is no more, right? Is that, that's it, right? I, I accept that, don't like it, there's many people down there that don't like it, don't know how to change it. But I do know that the service that I have gotten couldn't have been there any quicker, any kinder, and I'm forever grateful, so thank you. Thank you.
Go, Bernie.
Oh, yes. We'll get her first.
Paul Salomani, twenty, Eswood Drive, um, I wanna talk about the blowout time, I have a lot of station pictures. Uh, I also wanna talk about social media again. Um, this past week, Sixty Minutes did a spot on social media, and how Germany changed their laws, because people are getting slandered, uh, all kinds of stuff goes on with social media. I, I don't know if, uh, the Borough or the state has to adopt these laws that Germany's adopted. They're pretty strict, if you get caught slandering somebody, you're going to jail. That's just the way it is, I suggest you watch Sixty Minutes. Um, it's, it's very informative, and it's probably the future of social media.
Do you agree with that?
I think it needs to be controlled. You may not think so, but I, you know, there's too much, excuse the expression, BS going out today, and people slandering each other, and throwing each other over the bus, it's not worth it. You know, it's something that needs to be done. So maybe in the future, we'll see that happen. Have a good night.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none then, I move to close the public forum.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, close the public forum, all in favor?